You're good.
I will call the public hearing of the charter revision to order. I think our first step is to have Attorney Vitti read the statute.
Nick.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, yes. It was rise to the... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. My apologies. I move to read into the record the call of the public hearings. Notice of public hearing for changes in provisions to the Bethel Town Charter. Pursuant to Connecticut law of statute, section seven dash one ninety-one, notices hereby given that the Charter Revision Committee for the Town of Bethel will hold a public hearing on November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven p.m. in the general purpose room from the C.J.A. Irving Municipal Service, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, for the purpose of hearing comments from the public regarding changes and revisions to the Bethel Town Charter dated at Bethel, Connecticut, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, Charter Revision Committee for the Town of Bethel. And the purpose of this meeting is to try the minds of the public, considering the charge given to the Charter Revision Commission by the Board of Selectment. Any issues that were given to us to review or any other concerns the public would like for us to address over the charter revision process. So this is the first of two mandated public hearings by law, and I'm sure we'll have several other opportunities throughout the process to have these conversations with the public. So my asset, it's not a huge crowd, so I'm not too concerned about abuse or use of time. But in the words of Stuart Carlson, brevity. So let's be efficient with our thoughts and your perspective on the charge or issues you'd like us to address. And then you also just state your name and address when you approach the mic. So I will open up the floor to your public comment.
If you're ready, go.
Good evening. Paul Zatkowski, twenty-four, Winter Road. Tonight I want to speak to you both as Bethel taxpayer and selectmen. I know I've spoken to all of you previously with word of selectmen. Again, I want to just thank you for your public service in doing this. I've done this before, and especially on one particular commission, I believe it was, when we split the vote. We're going to talk about that a little bit later. Tell me when I'm talking to a lot of other people, I'll come back later, okay? I've got that tendency. Tonight I want to really concentrate on a couple of issues. And the big issue with me is, and I think I sort of promoted this with the Board of Selectmen, is capital construction projects. You know, if you take a look at all of our buildings that we've built recently, okay, and I want to go back to even when I was back on the permanent building committee, that goes back many, many years. We seem to do things backwards. And it's been concerning to me because I'm a taxpayer like you and saying, there seems to be, okay, we had to either reduce the size of the project or there were cost overruns, too many change orders. You know, and I think with all the experience that we've had, and I want to use the police station as perhaps the most recent example. You know, what we were voted upon in this room right here, that was a great, pretty picture. And say, I'm going to build this beautiful building brick and mortar, you know, complete for you. And subsequently, it didn't happen. There was no brick and mortar there. It was reduced a little bit. And then we had to come, that was for thirteen and a half billion dollars, and we had to come back for an additional eight hundred thousand dollars plus and still not complete. And you know, if there's anything that provokes me, it's that. I can only think of one project, and I got a sort of patent, Rich Strayton, myself, and Roy Steiner, when we were on the building committee for Berry School. It's the only school, or only building, I should say, that we were ahead of, ahead of schedule and under budget, because we pounded and made sure that everything was done correctly. I don't want to go through what was wrong at the police station because I could take up probably going until eleven o'clock tonight. However, what I'm proposing is that any project over two million dollars, the town and officials select an architect to produce this magic word, shovel-ready plans. Now let me explain what I mean by shovel-ready plans. Shovel-ready plans means that when these plans are complete, we can go off to bid. In other words, whether it's electrical, plumbing, the foundation, we know what those costs are. That eliminates this nonsense about cost overruns or change orders. How do you do that? Well, let me just use an example. If it takes, say, we have to pick a particular architect and says, we want shovel-ready plans. And he would come back after going through several architects between the administration of the town and wherever the building we're building, would select a particular plan, okay, a picture. The problem is with that picture, we voted on the picture, we never saw the guts of it, okay? This would be completely, we know everything on it, completely. And what you do at that time is the architect would say, this is going to cost you eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay, this allows the town of Bethel, the people to vote on and say, do we want to go forward and develop a complete shovel-ready plans for eight hundred thousand? If they say no, the project is dead. If they say yes, then there's something like about, I want to say, anywhere from twelve month to eighteen month period for the architect and owner representative of the town to develop these plans. And it comes back to say, oh, look, this is going to cost now the town seventeen and a half million dollars. That's an example. Now then we have to go back to a referendum. At that time, the people could say, no, or yes. The downside is that we've got a complete set of plans that's rejected. Maybe they could be reworked. But on the other hand, if it says, yeah, go ahead, because the owner representative and the architect, they've got to develop a project plan, shovel-ready plans based on current costs, not estimates. That was the fault with this police station, was estimates. You eliminate that, so you go back to a referendum. So what that means essentially, you don't have cost overruns. You don't have to go back to the people for more money. The bonding has really held up with the architect and the construction company. And you've got the product that you want. You know, like I said, we voted for a brick and mortar building. We didn't get it. Okay, there's a lot of things we have not received. This avoids a lot of that. This is perhaps the most important thing, I think, for this charter revision commission. Right now, the school is going through for two programs, Rockwell School and Johnson. They've got the sort of a plan in shape like this similarly. However, for future municipal plans, we really need something like this. I'll be happy to come back and expand upon it if you need me to expand upon that. Because I honestly feel, you know, pick a building in this town where we didn't have a cost over line. Every one, with the exception of, as I said, Berry School. I mean, we were pretty hard goals with this whole thing. So that's the first one, so.
Did we also see?
I mean, well, not yet.
Okay. Okay, with you, Nick?
Sure.
Okay. The second issue with me, and I know we charge a lot of things to this charter revision commission, is the Public Utilities Commission. I have sat on this commission for fourteen years, okay? I can tell you that I've gained a lot of experience. Rich and I, you know, we've sort of done the same thing. However, as you know, the technologies are getting more and more succinct and demanding, especially on specifications. Right now, the charter, I mean, the Public Utilities Commission has five members, the three Board of Selectmen and two appointees. I'd like to expand that to have four appointees. In other words, the total commission would be up to seven. Why? You need the expertise. We need a lot of expertise. Right now, we've got Dean Gualtieri, who's a chemical engineer, and... Peter, better lock here. Peter. Pete, now Pete from Lanty, plumber. Now, we understand some of the things right now. We have ran into a situation, we caught a lot of savings in terms of their expertise, especially in water and sewer. But as we go forward, because of demands, the, what the state is mandating, I think we need more expertise. And the expertise will be, it should be designed around engineering, plumbing, okay, in that particular arena, because there's no question that we save the town a lot of money. To give you an idea, ten years ago, both departments were deeply in debt. Today's sewer is not in debt, okay? Water, of course, is, because we were being mandated to operate the system. And as you're operating, you need this expertise all over the place. The next issue that I'd like to talk to you about is a one that I'm very, very fond of is that's the budget itself, the town budget versus the education budget. Right now, I'm the one that's, the only one on Board of Selectmen who's against this whole thing where one budget, if one budget fails, everything fails. Wrong, from my perspective. Because basically, you're overriding the vote of the person who voted for this, okay? I know there's this thinking that, okay, there's a lot of things that on the town budget is part of the education budget. Yes, that's true, but the education budget is strictly education. It's not the buildings. We own the buildings. If that's an accounting issue, you can move these things around from an accounting point of view, but don't put the onus on the budget process itself. If one fails, the whole thing fails. That should not happen, because it'll create a firestorm, I will guarantee that. Because I remember when I sat on that commission, that was the hottest issue at the time, is allow it to stay as it is. Don't go that route. Board of Selectmen, the next issue. Needless to say, you know, it's only two years. I'd like to see that expanded to four years for the following reason. As long as I've been living here in town, which is nineteen seventy-six, we've only had one administration for only two years. All of the brothers have been former. There's a learning process. By the time you, if you have just a one term, by the time you do two years, you're just starting to get involved relative to union negotiations, financial issues, okay, between bonding and everything else. I think it should be a four-year term personally, because all of your other boards and commissions are usually four years. The last, I'm sorry, the last issue is, not the last, is the annual town meeting. I would like to see the annual town meeting returned back to May, okay? Right now, we're doing it at April. The reason why I'm saying May is that those, there's a few, Nick, I believe you sit on still on Board of Education. We don't know all the numbers from Hartford yet, and we're making a lot of assumptions as we're going through the budget process. When we had it previously in May, we had a better handle on what the state was going to provide back to, especially for education or any other grant program. It's, why it was changed, to me, I don't have any handle on that one at all. And then the other issue on the very same subject, eliminate this high or low question on the ballot. I've never seen anybody knock on the door here and says, I want to pay more taxes, you know? The high and low question has always been misleading. Even when the budget passes, you see a lot of, too high. Okay. And the last thing is action requiring a referendum. And this is a monetary thing. Right now, we've got it at one million. I'd like to raise it up to two million. The reason why is, you know, everything is increased, inflation, everything else, and it just makes it easier for you to get things done faster. I don't think two million, I don't know the difference today between one million and two million, frankly. And that's it. If you have any questions, kindly, you know, ask me. I'm open to responding.
Thank you, Mrs. Zatkowski. Can I just, did you mean a million to two million on PUC stuff or just any capital item on that any budget?
Any capital item.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, thank you for doing this. It's a very important job on a town.
I do have one. So your suggestion on the getting the quotes prior to construction, you want that specifically to reference an architect?
Yes, you have to have an architect, okay, as well as an owner's rep once it's been approved from an architect point of view. In other words, if you have four architects all bidding for the thing, this is the pretty picture he's presenting to us, and he's telling you, this is going to cost you thirteen and a half million dollars over a number of people. At that time, when you go out to develop, you pick that particular architect, at that time, you need an owner's rep as well as the architect. The owner's rep has got to be some sort of professional who understands construction as you go along for that next twelve to eighteen months and develop these shovel-ready plans. You're ready at that point to present it to that, to the public for a vote. Yes?
Paul, now the downside to that, I mean, if you're pushing all this process up front, does that mean we're spending money, additional money is on design and more specific, our eyes or whatever you call them, that we send out, and that costs us money? So is that a...
It's going to cost you money one way or the other. And the downside is the fact, if the people reject it, say, I spent that eight hundred thousand dollars, I've got a set of plans, but it's sitting on the shelf, I'm not going forward. That's the downside, that's the risk behind it. But at the same time, if you want to, say, bring it back up two years later, you know, you've got at least something to start with, and you can just update this with whomever.
And I'm sorry, you suggested that the vote to approve getting the plans made?
Yes.
So it's basically two votes up.
That's correct. That's correct.
And never had plans like that drawn up, that's about what the year would go around?
Yeah, about, well, roughly, that's about what it could cost, I want to say for the police station, okay? Roughly. So, you know, like I said, we've always voted in a pretty picture, but we've never seen the guts. What's it going to cost for plumbing? What's it going to cost for a foundation? What's it going to cost for mortar work? What's it going to cost for soft costs? In other words, the ownership of the building. This is all-inclusive, such that when you go for it a second time to the people, they will, you have a grand number there, and that's the reason why I need an owner's rep in that particular process itself, because the architect and the owner's rep have got to be current with the current construction costs. And this is where we really went south on the police station. I'll use this as an example. Two weeks before we put a shovel in the ground, the construction company said, I'm at zero point, I can't take any more changes. Then I think I would stop. But it wasn't my call, but this is where I'm trying to avoid. Okay? Jared, any questions here? Anybody?
Now, well, I guess I do have one.
Please.
When you go out to bid like that, who owns those architects' plans? The architect or does the town own the plans?
We should own the plans.
Because there's been other situations, I believe, where the architect has owned the plans.
Contractual negotiation with the architect.
We would own the plans, okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much, Paul.
Give me a call anytime you want to expand upon it, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Labrecq, and I live at ninety-four Nashville Road here in Bethel.
I'm sorry, Labrecq?
Daniel Labrecq.
Do you spell it?
Sure. It's L-A-V-R-E-C-Q-U-E.
Nashville Road?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on the committee here, and thank you for your time this evening. I read about this public hearing this morning in the News Times, and I wanted to come tonight because I am in favor of, I believe, the proposals to raise the threshold from one million to two million. Is that correct? Or even higher, because I feel that one million is pretty low, and I feel that since I've moved to Bethel about three and a half years ago, I'm always running down to vote on something. And I don't want to seem un-small D democratic, but I feel that it's, we elect the selectmen to make these decisions for us. And so, because I work a full-time job, I have a two-year-old, I don't have a lot of time to pour over all the details of every little decision. So I feel, but then I hear that there is a budget or whatever it is, and I feel like, oh, yes, I do want clean water, so I got to make sure I go down there and try to convince my wife and drag everybody else to go and vote for the thing. And then I find out the next day in the newspaper, okay, maybe it passed, but it's like ninety votes to forty votes, and only a few hundred people showed up to vote in a town of over twenty thousand. So that's a little distressing to me, because I feel like then we're, it's like extreme minority rule. So I think we should have more faith in our elected officials to make those decisions for us. Probably a good time to segue into the two-year versus four-year terms. I wouldn't be opposed to changing it to four years. I think the previous speaker, the selectman, said that it takes a while to gain the expertise, but not only that, and I've never run for public office. I suspect that year or two also includes some campaigning and maybe some shift of focus away from the governing to campaigning. So I think with a four-year term, you'd have three years of governing and... I don't want to say that you know governing in the second year, but I suspect that year four would have some campaigning in there as well. And I believe, oh, the budget, yeah, the question that's too high, too low, I always thought was a little confusing. I don't know if you should get rid of it, but maybe could you add a just right? If I think that the budget's okay just the way it is, I think I should at least have an option to say that, because I feel that neither choice expresses what I feel. And I think that's all I have to say today. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
You mentioned voting turnout on the one million. Do you think doing it two million would increase that voter turnout?
What I'm saying is, will it...
Bring more attention to it?
It might bring more attention to it, so it would be, I wasn't even thinking about it that way. I was thinking just trying to get rid of all the little voting, because I think if people are like, oh, it's another vote, and, oh, what's it? And not only that, when I heard about the police station and then, oh, wait a minute, we need another eight hundred thousand, I said, wait a minute, I thought we voted to do this thing. So why aren't they just going ahead and doing it in the eight hundred? And I'm not, you know, it's not peanuts, and it's not nothing, but didn't we already decide to do the police station? So what are we going to say, like, just move in without furniture or whatever else was unfinished about it? I mean, just go and do this. So I came down and was like, oh, yes, get, borrow the extra eight hundred thousand. But, so that's, I'm just, you know, like, once you make the decision to do the thing, you got to do the thing. And if it was like a ten million dollar difference, then, you know, maybe that'd be different. But I'm just kind of just a little perplexed. But no, if you did raise it and you might, if you're asking people to come out less, then maybe they wouldn't pay more attention to things you're asking them to come out for. Probably. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to offer some insight or...
Richard Strayton, Southern Cottage Show, and also the selectmen in town. I'm really surprised there's not a lot more people here seeking to discuss this matter, because it is a big issue for the town and its future. I'd like to speak on a couple of items also that I agree with Paul. As he mentioned, we've been on some building committees together, and the, I don't know what the wording is, it could be just shovel-ready or have a whole architectural plans, but one of the things, Nick, you've mentioned that an architect, well, a building could also be designed and built, so again, you have to look at the verbiage for how you're going to say that, because you might not necessarily want to hire an architect.
Yeah, I was saying, because even if it's a Parks and Rec project or something where it's a different mechanism, but we want the number in advance. But I don't want to be too specific to a certain trade that...
You know, I go way back on a lot of these buildings committees, and you run into that problem. You hire an architect and they say, well, it's going to be fifty thousand or five hundred thousand dollars to build something. They do the drawings, and by the time you get to bid, it might be a year later, and that's where you run into problems. And then the building committees look at, well, we're locked into this number, and they cut back on the buildings. We did that with middle school roofs. Two years later, you had put new roofs on those buildings because they failed. So that's, you know, you want the job done right the first time. You don't want to go back and do it. Also, for the town to own the plans, you have to put that in the verbiage for the contracts, because the architects always say, they own the plans, and you can't, you know, if the project doesn't get done then, you move on to several years after, you can't use their plan, so somehow that verbiage, that the town will own the plans when they're paid for. On the limit for borrowing money, the feel of the, Paul wasn't on that, but the other two selectmen, was the one million dollars still for the, for town fund, funding, and it was two million for the borrowing money for the PUC. Now, the PUC funds are reimbursed by the users. So that's why we were looking not to have to go to the whole town for a referendum under, under two million dollars. I agree with the adding the two members. I, Paul had mentioned four members, but I think he was, we were talking about adding two members so there would be a four-member total seven-member board on the PUC. I agree with going back to May for the town meeting. I think it gives the boards of commission a little more time to put their budget together. People are already working on their budgets for next year, and I think a bit later on, it's better to move that along. So I'd like to see that possibly go back to May. On the budget question, too high, too low, I've never seen, no, I take that back. I think maybe in one instance, we had a budget that came back too low, and the Board of Finance put more money back in the Board of Education budget, but ninety-nine percent of the time, people say it's too high and it passes. But I think that can be eliminated. I agree with the four-year term for the Board of Selectmen. Someone gets in there, it's going to occur, and you don't want to get started and up and running and you're running for reelection again, so. Most of the other towns in the area, I think all the other towns in the area are now four years, so I'd like to see that proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry. If you may, I know, moving to the county meeting from April May, is that set that way because the way the budget has to pass by a certain time?
Yes. The tax collector came before the, the tax collector came before the Board of Selectmen and during the last charter revision. And said if the town budget failed several times, it would go into fiscal year, and they would have to do part-time borrowing or supplementary bills. And in the past, town had gone to a lot of referendums as a budget, but pretty much in the past ten years, budgets have passed either the first or second time around. We still make the deadline to do the tax bills by then. I just think the extra month really is important. It gives people more time to put the budgets together and have a better idea. And a lot of times, if you don't get the information from the state, we still might not get the information from the state until the end of June or July or...
October.
I think this year, October, we, we got it, so, um, the longer the time, the better, I think.
Another question, on the building plan. If you get building plans approved, like, maybe beforehand, shovel-ready, so to speak, is there a guarantee on price, like, is there an overrun based on something called a plan? Is there some guarantee by the architect, like, insurance for that, or is there some benefit, other than just going to that frame, foresee problems?
It depends on the project. Uh, if it's a large project, you'll have the, an architect and a construction manager or owner's rep, uh, preparing those cost estimates. So you want to have that cost estimate ready at the end of your drawings and everything, so you go to the townspeople and say, you know, we think this is going to be, or, or there's two options. You, you work off their cost estimates, or you actually bid the job.
Okay.
You bid the job, um, and you put in the bid documents that it has to be passed by a referendum within so many days of awarding the bids, then you know exactly what the building will cost you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do the question, so do the contracts have price guarantees? I'm sure you have performance guarantees of some kind in these contracts for the large projects like the police station. Should there be some sort of, uh, performance and pricing guarantee, like if they go on overruns, like so many, so many dollars, and they need it, so many dollars to share, or whatever? Should that be part of all our contracts?
Well, there is. There's contingent sheets on all projects. Um, the police station, a little bit different than the school buildings, you know, with the school buildings right now, the, the, the architects have thought, uh, done the drawings, they provided the cost estimate, uh, the construction manager has put the project out to bid, but before the state will allow them to put a shovel in the ground, there has to be a signed bid or a signed contract that this school is going to cost sixty-four million dollars per year. And it's where, the other way around, if it's a town building, it, it can go a different way, so, and the school buildings were, uh, were under their jurisdiction on how, uh, the project, because they don't want that to happen. They want to award a bid and then come back and say, well, we need three million dollars more for the complete project.
Different reimbursement rates, too, depending on the type of construction for schools as well, like, we're doing, uh, build as new for both Rockwell and Johnson, because it's the highest reimbursement rate.
Correct. Correct.
We're setting it up, yeah.
But if you're over a certain square footage for a building, they will only allow you, they only allow so much room for a closet, so much room for a classroom, and if you want to build it bigger, then you pay the whole part of it.
Yeah, we, we got waivers, but, yeah, and it's, yeah. And that's one of the challenges, too, you know, and I think we have to be very diligent if we move forward with this and how we word it, that we're not contradicting state policy.
Right.
I'm sure we're looking at that, uh, because that would, it, one of the, the ed specs are what we have to comply with for the schools, and if we eliminate some pieces of those, it actually lowers our reimbursement rate, because we're not complying to...
The, the state projects are always...
Much more, yeah.
And education projects, yeah, too.
And hopefully we'll be good for a while.
To check in all of this.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I have another question.
Absolutely.
Earlier, I was talking about turnout for, uh, a referendum, and I'm looking at, so I don't know if this is being recorded audio in, in visual, because there's, I think, nine members of the committee, and in the audience, there's five. The whole town, there's five of us here, and two, well, I would, so two, two are selectmen, and the gentleman in the last row, I have a feeling might be related to one of you, or, so he's reading a book, and so I don't think he's here for, for tonight. So I think that, and this is the charter we're talking about, right? This is the set of rules that governs the entire town, and there's five of us in the audience, and, and so, that's what I'm talking about, when, when we're asking people to come out and vote on things, I think that they got other things going on, and we just need to, like, rely more on our elected officials.
I think this is very surprising, though. See, I'm not, I'm not talking about this particular group, but many town meetings have been packed.
Packed.
I don't know what the situation is.
So maybe something else is going on tonight? I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, we...
There's some kind of party going on down the street. There's cars all over. Well, let me ask you a question, because this is an important, um, um, thing for us to think about, because we're talking about where it says you have to put it in a locally, a widely distributed newspaper. No one reads, a lot of people don't read the paper.
Right.
So what would you suggest as a way to get out the word that we're having meetings and this is important?
Sure, sure. So I, I happened to catch the News Times, because I work in Danbury, I caught the News Times, saw the front page, saw that this was an article on the front page. I follow the town of Bethel on Facebook. I think I follow the town of Bethel on Twitter, maybe, maybe I follow Matt Nickerbocker, I don't, so, it was this on the town's Facebook page? Do you know?
Yes, it was.
It was? Okay. Um, and then, once I was at work, I was working, so I wasn't playing on my phone all day. Um, boy, what else? Social media, so, but I'm not by any means like too social media savvy, that's about as far as I go, is Facebook and Twitter. And I don't even tweet too much, I just do it so I can get the news. Um, Insta, is the, Bethel have an Instagram? Is there anybody on that?
I'm not sure. It's definitely the Instagram. Yeah, but Fiona would have a better sense.
Yeah, you wait a couple months, and then there's another thing, Snapchat, and then...
We're starting Bethel Social, and it's not a forum, it's a group.
Okay.
Which is, it's independent of the town, but it's, yeah, that's...
I thought it was there.
And I also, I think I also read that your statutory mandate to have another meeting after this?
Yes.
Maybe, and people are waiting for meeting two? I don't know.
Yeah, and that one is when we start, start, you know, putting all the information, and...
Got it, got it.
But we're going to return back to the, the Board of, uh, Selectmen. But in between now and then, we'll be meeting, we'll have public meetings with the, the paid leadership of the departments that some of the changes may impact, to give them insight, and all of them have public input as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really know. Uh, we were talking about you and your...
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's all recorded, if you have any questions.
It's all recorded.
Um, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I missed it something again.
Sure. You know, Richard Straighten, against Southern Catfish Show, um, one of the big things people are talking about, the penny saver, because the penny saver goes to every house in, in town. Uh, I would also encourage you, because of such a low turnout tonight, maybe to schedule another one in the near future. I know you're, you have to do two minimum, um, maybe send out a postcard to people, that might help. Um, you know, I, I know the Selectmen Office does that when they do, um, um, referendums or, uh, budget hearings and things like that, and so that might be a good idea. And, uh, just for the public's knowledge, that all your meetings are open to the public, uh, there's public input also, so at any time during your deliberation, that you can take.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leinhard, is there anything you'd like to contribute to the late top brass?
I think we should keep the, uh, Selectmen at their years. I think one, I think one minor, they just do that. Uh, I'm not sure of the legality of going back into a budget that is, uh, that approved by voters, and then go, you know, go take more money out of it, when, so I think that has to be looked at from a legal standpoint. And, uh, other than that, good luck.
Thank you very much. So can you just say your, uh, name and address as well for the recording?
I'm like our eleven of Green Drive, so...
Thank you, Mr. Leinhard.
Thank you.
One last call for comment. I'll make a motion to adjourn the first public hearing of the Charter Reversion Commission.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, guys.